Committee meeting number two of 2023, the ninth of March. As due to the time, I'll move that we break for thirty minutes and recommence the meeting at twelve forty five. Those in favour? Unanimous and carried. Thank you.
You
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome back to Environment Sustainability Committee meeting number two of 2023 on 9th March. All councillors on committee are in attendance. Acknowledgement of country. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land upon which we meet. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, as the keepers of the traditions, cultures and stories. We're proud people. Are there any declarations of interest in matter on the agenda? No. We have no business outstanding, so I'll move to confirmation of minutes of the meeting on 9th of February. Does any member of committee wish to raise any matter within the minutes? No. I'll ask for a mover. Thank you, councillor Fekner. Second, councillor Kunsman. Thank you. I'll put that. Those in favour? Unanimous and carried. Thank you. Moving to officers' reports. Right at the beginning, I'll just note that within item two here, there are, within the report, not within the recommendation at all, but within the report, there are some, there are four street names that are spelt incorrectly. Those spelling corrections will be updated for the, for the minutes going forward. So, item two is T Tree Bioenergy Funding Annual Programme Report for 2023. It's a report concerning Ipswich City Council's role in managing and delivering on revenue collected from the T Tree Bioenergy Facility. I'd like to call forward appropriate officer, if that's okay.
Good, good afternoon, Chair, Mayor and councillors. Phil Smith here, Natural, Environment and Land Manager.
Thank you, Mr Smith. Because T Tree Bioenergy Funding is external funding that council manages, can I just ask you to explain in, not in detail, but specifically how it comes to council and how it's managed? And if there are any other highlights of this year's round?
Certainly. As you say, it's a bit of a unique situation there. So, council takes funding from T Tree Bioenergy Plant in relation to the tonnage of waste that's taken in by that plant and process there. It was a part of the planning conditions originally when the plant was being, when the development application came in and it was then later entrenched and written into those conditions that we'd take that money based on that tonnage. The intent of that money was really to provide some offsets, potential offset to the community in regards to the community and environmental impacts of having that waste processing centre on or near their community. So, in that regard, we manage it and provide it to the community through community representatives and through community engagement in regards to what projects and programmes we should support. And we administer that and then deliver it through projects and programmes on ground. In that regard, the projects and programmes are all focused on, I suppose, improvements or benefits to the community and/or the environment. And there's a fairly stringent set of criteria by which we assess proposed projects that come in through Shapier Ipswich and/or the Willow Bank area group. There's a committee that assess those projects in terms of whether they meet the criteria and whether they can be delivered so pragmatically. And then we go back to the local councils and the Willow Bank area group to confirm that project list and then move forwards on the delivery of those projects and programmes. The governance was reviewed to support that as a process about three or four years ago and is still in place. And that's what we're using now. Over the last few years, we've done various projects and got some good on-ground results, including local pathway connections. We've done some planting and weed work to local parks, pathways and some wildlife signage. All the information on the projects and programmes are available both through the website and through the Integrity Hub as well, in terms of how much we've spent. Going forwards, as a continuation of these kind of projects, with the establishment of a new reserve probably a highlight in that, which was proposed back in the day by the Willow Bank area group about two or three years ago, as well as by the local community and was supported by T Tree at the time. And that's proposed to be on Payne's Road, so in existing council land. And we're looking to do some embellishments to assist, well, to improve the amenity for the community and for local koala populations that are improving to be quite healthy out there. And we've found some koala scats in the last couple of years with, with DES, the Department of Environment and Science, doing some surveys. So, it should be a good, good programme going forwards. That'll, we envisage that to take a few years worth of investment to embellish that in regards to tracks, trails, securing the site and then doing some offset and improvements of the plantings there. So, that's quite exciting. And some of the signage projects proposed around Mack Family Park, George Hatchman. And from memory, we're just looking to continue the wildlife fauna movement signage as well, which is another good and important project.
Yes. So, I, I had noticed that over time, the, the agreed framework and the methodology for determining projects for the funding to be allocated to is very inclusive with, with the community, that the, the community, particularly at Willow Bank, are part of that process, which I think adds to the delivery, the fine delivery of the outcomes for community in general. It's not just for the Willow Bank area nearby to T Tree Bioenergy location, but can, can be considered citywide.
That's right. So, the criteria is weighted as such that it favours projects that are in that vicinity on the assumption that that's where the impacts of the facility are most prevalent. However, if they can be demonstrated that there's benefits citywide, those kind of projects and programmes will be considered. I think last year, a good example of that was the support of the Ipswich Koala Protection Society, who were doing work both in and around Ebenezer as well as Collingwood Park area. And that was supported by the local community, but the benefits of that are across the whole city.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Great example. Any committee members have, Mayor Harding?
Yes, thank you, Miss, through the chair. Thank you, Mrs Smith. I'm just looking at table one, the progress on the project. So, the first is the revegetative, revegetation to Willow Bank area. Just going through that, is there going to be a new koala reserve on Payne's Road?
Yes, so that was the project that I was just spoken to. So, Koala Reserve, it's essentially a nature reserve and it was on existing council land, so that will take yet.
So, it'll be a formal desert, okay.
Yep.
I guess when I look at progress, I'm looking at timing and schedule. So, when do we think that will be finished?
Or finished is a, is an interesting question. It'll be in continual maintenance for, and improvement for the next, I think, said about two to three years. The first step of that will be securing the site. We have problems with ingress of mountain, motorbikes and things at the moment. So, within the next few months, we're going to start on some assessments. So, we've got people going out there and doing some surveys. From that, we'll do access so we can get in and do maintenance, potentially the end of this year. And then the following year will be quite a bit of work in the construction of fences and further tracks to make sure we can get in and do the, do the maintenance. And then probably the next two years will be planting and embellishment improvements, car parks, those kind of things.
Okay. So, obviously, is it a multi-year project?
Yep.
I just wonder, we, we also carried across the table too. Thank you. The next one, establishment of new parks and conservation areas or vegetation buffers in line with proposals. Can you let me know, obviously, if you talk about the works plan and budget for the next three years, but can you, I guess, give me a schedule? Is there any work happening now or are we just doing design and sort of?
Now, there's a lot of feasibility in these things because of the process, because we go out to the public and say essentially, what, what would you like to see? What we get back is everything from quite fully formed ideas through to early kind of concepts. As a result of that, there's quite a bit of work that needs to be done in the background to understand the feasibility of these things. Others which are more developed, we can move into the, the implementation of within the year. In regards to the buffers there, that was another pro or another tick in the box of the Payne's Road site, which straddles some residential and industrial zone properties. So, that'll actually provide some of that buffering. And other sites, we continue to look at where, I suppose, where they pop up as from an opportunistic perspective. But we are stuck in regards to these projects will be delivered on council-owned land. So, we're restricted somewhat. So, we are looking from a feasibility point of view, if there's any other land around there that would be suitable for those kind of programmes.
So, obviously, we agreed to do this project last year, so when we sit down with our residents and they ask us, where is it at?
Yep. Well, we, we'll be at there for a long time in terms of looking for the opportunities, but the Payne's Road is the, is the first one we're going to be rolling out in terms of a, a vegetated buffer and, and reserve.
So, just looking, next is the footpath construction, McHale's Way and Warren Court, which is completed. You're looking at other local options under investigation. What other footpaths are you looking at?
There was a couple, again, a couple proposed this year through the community engagement. One was a replication of the, or a similar project to the Brisbane Valley rail trail type scenario, which again will take a lot of feasibility and background work. We didn't dismiss it out of hand because there's a lot of benefits both from an environmental and a community perspective. But the likelihood is there'll be a lot of work in trying to understand whether that's a feasible option or not. So, that's in feasibility stage.
I guess that receives state and federal funding as well.
It would, well, something of that scale would need to, and that's going to be several years away, yeah.
Okay. And next, the wetland and waterway restoration on Bremmer River and Worrel Creek. Understand flood, but just where, where are we at now? How's that progressing?
Yeah, again, we've got a team working on that constantly in regards to where we can get in and establish planting. There's a couple of locations on Worrel Creek that we were aware of and we've been discussing that are currently, I think they're grazed land, so they're under lease. But there, it will be a programme next year, a continual programme of waterway rehab, and that'll be part of that. We've struggled a little bit in, because one of the criteria of delivering these projects is that they can't be in an existing council programme. So, the, the idea of the T Tree is that it delivers above and beyond what council's already doing. Because our programme of riparian rehab's quite extensive, there's not many opportunities that arise that are not within potential existing programmes. But again, it's a case of continuing to look forward to, to opportunities that we can do that in these areas. And it'll be a feasibility programme, I suppose, a feasibility piece of work for the next 12 months to, to understand and plan that. It'd be nice, the intent long term is to have some fairly clear and concise plans on these. So, we don't have to necessarily go out every year and ask for brand new ideas, but we can continue to roll out programmes for three to five years and use this funding, which is not an insignificant amount. So, if we can be nice and concise with that planning and identify those locations and say have a three-year programme, that would be what we're trying to do. It does mean though, at the moment, we haven't necessarily got much to show for it in terms of ongoing delivery.
If I move to the next one, the partnership with the Ipswich Koala Protection Society, has, has that monitoring apparatus been provided to them yet?
It's been, yep. So, they've purchased the, the monitoring apparatus. We're waiting to get a report back to see what, what that comes back with. So, that was very important to them in collecting data to monitor the local population. So, as an acquittal, we'll get a report back on that to see, to see what's, what's been done and what the, the data was, that was collected, excuse me. Sorry.
Thank you. I guess my next, my last question is around the, in the risk management implications. The last sentence says that you talked about projects and as such consideration will be given to the suspension of community consultation for a period whilst the present list of project and programmes is, is delivered. I guess my, my view is it'd be great to have a bit of a schedule to show residents so they can actually see why. It's probably not so much we're not doing it, just that there's so much on that programme that we need to have that explanation because I think we'd probably need a bit more than this.
No, I agree. And I, and I think that's kind of alluded to the point that I was making before. It'd be nice to have a concise and clear programme of works for the next, as we do with our capital works and as we try to do with our operational works programming council, is have three years of clear investment and milestones that we can present. It's great to go to the public and say, what do you want to see? But what it then feeds in is a, is a continual workload in terms of doing that feasibility and delivery. And if we can build a programme based on the great ideas we've already got and have that clear and concise in terms of investment amounts and milestones, and we can present that back and say, look, this is what we're trying to do while we're delivering those, rather than just step away and, and not speak to the public, I think that would be great.
And I think it'll be just, just the nature of the, the fund and each year, I'm sure residents, especially around Willow Bank, will raise projects. So, I think it'd be that, it won't be his, three, the next three years and then we'll look, it'd probably add on to things, add to that programme as well. So, it'll be iterative. Yeah. Thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Any other members, councillor Fekner?
Just another question around the governance and the administration of the monies spent. It's identified in the report that there is a little bit of a gap because this fund sits outside of any, of our normal procurement or community funding guidelines. It says that WAG will be consulted on this or council will seek to rectify this. How soon will that happen? Are these conversations that we've already had with, with WAG?
So, yeah, the, just as a point of clarity, the procurement processes are the same. So, because it's council procuring services, anything that goes through as part of this goes through that council's approved procurement processes. So, that's not outside of this. The governance in terms of prioritisation, I suppose, is where we're really looking, where the changes occur. The requirements of the T Tree fund are not necessarily aligned with council's strategic priorities. And that gives us an opportunity because it can deliver on other things, but it does make it difficult from the point of view of getting works done and, and resourcing this. Obviously, council's got a very busy schedule of works, both operationally and from a capital perspective. And this kind of sits alongside or in parallel to that. Good ideas that are put forward often, if they're, if they're a priority of council, they're probably already being delivered. So, it means we've got this bunch of projects that don't necessarily sit neatly with councils as the priorities. So, getting the resources to be able to deliver them is often tricky. But we have, with the example of the, the footpath there, we were able to use the existing footpath programme and put it in alongside with enough, I suppose, enough foresight and planning. We can just roll it into the programme, but it does make things a little bit difficult. The governance arrangements, as I say, we set, I don't know from the top of my head, and I can find out, but I think it was about three or four years ago. And they came through council at the time, and that included the assessment criteria, how the funds are administered, who has the final say and, and those criteria, they're all came to council for adoption. Going for, I think there was an amendment at the time that brought WAG back into it as a kind of a final, final say. Working with WAG going forwards, we've now got an agreement in place, I think that's just been signed, that has them as a, as a, almost as a consultative committee. So, we get proposals from all over the city and then we go back to them and say, you know, this is what's being proposed. Do you feel that this is representative of what the local community want and support? So, that's just gone through and been finalised as, as an agreement as well in, in the last probably week or so. So, that's as an amendment to the existing governance guidelines.
So, just sorry to come back to it. It says that there is a risk to council from a probity perspective in issuing payments to a community group.
There was, and that's been.
So, that has been resolved?
Yeah, through the, through the establishment of that agreement, yeah.
The one that you refer to as being signed just recently?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Very valid questions. Thank you, councillor Fekner. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr Smith. Very informative. Committee, the recommendation is that in accordance with the T Tree Bioenergy Funding governance arrangements, council endorsed the proposed programme of projects for development and delivery in the 2023-2024 financial year. Do I have a mover? Thank you, councillor Fekner. Second, thank you, councillor Kunsman. I'll open the matter for discussion. No discussion? Oh, yes, councillor.
I just reiterate what I said before. I think when we go back to, to WAG and the community, it'd be good to have a schedule so they can see when things happening. Otherwise, they will just, because they, because obviously not, not a lot of physical work looks to be happening in the next 12 months. They'll need to know, know why and what the grander plan is. As you know, we all attend the WAG meetings.
Yes.
Five of us, yeah.
And they absolutely like to be taken on the journey and, and informed. Absolutely, rightly so. Any further discussion? No, then I'll put the motion. Those in favour? Unanimous and carried. Thank you. Item three is EnviroPlan Annual Progress Report 2021-2022. This is a report concerning the EnviroPlan programme, the levy progress report for the financial year 21-22. Does any member of committee wish to ask any questions? No. There is a, a number of, or highlighted summary there. Some, some, of, of course, very impactful items there. But I suppose if everyone's going to take this read and, and have an understanding. The recommendation is that the report concerning the EnviroPlan Annual Progress Report from 21-22 be received and noted. Do I have a mover? Thank you, councillor Fekner. Second, thank you, Mayor Harding. I'll open the matter for discussion. There being no discussion, I'll put the motion. Those in favour? Unanimous and carried. Item four is Stormwater Quality Offset Programme Annual Report. This is a report concerning the Stormwater Quality Offset Programme status from the commencement until June 2022. Does any member of committee wish to ask any questions? No. The recommendation is that the Ipswich City Council Stormwater Quality Offset Programme Annual Report be received and the contents noted. Do I have a mover? Thank you, councillor Fekner. Second, thank you, Mayor Harding. Open the matter for discussion. There being no discussion, I'll put the motion. Those in favour? Unanimous and carried. Thank you. Now, I have no notices of motion, nor matters arising. I'll call the meeting closed at 1:07 PM and the next committee will start in 10 minutes. Thank you.